And you're live.
Great. Okay, we're going to open the Hood River City Council meeting for February 22nd, 2021. We're still via Zoom, we're still in a COVID-19 situation. So first of all, I just want to make a land acknowledgement this evening. As we meet tonight, let us all remember that today, we are stewards of land that has come, has been home to indigenous peoples for thousands of years before the recent arrival of the European heritage dominant culture. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. And then Jonathan, I don't know if you have a flag for us, but I'll go ahead with the pledge. Great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, great. I have two people signed up for Business from the Audience this evening. Dan Ball from the Tree Committee will be first, and then Susan Crowley will be second. So if you want to let Dan on. Okay, Dan, you're on. You can go ahead and unmute, and you have three minutes. Dan, I'm not sure, we can't hear you. If you can try to unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Okay, I think you can hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, now I have to start over. All right, good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Ball again, and I'm the current Chair of the Hood River City Tree Committee. If you're not familiar with the City Tree Committee, it's outlined in Municipal Code, Chapters 1312 and 1314. So check out that Municipal Code if you have any questions about the structure and function of our committee. And tonight, I think you may already be aware of this, but I just wanted to announce this evening that Hood River, again, has been recognized as a Tree City USA for its ninth consecutive year. This award each year is given to the city by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And in fact, a little trivia, 69 cities in the state of Oregon have been given this award this year. The Tree Committee have been the ones to annually apply for this award, and one of the several award requirements for this is for our mayor to proclaim an Arbor Day for Hood River. And Mayor McBride made this proclamation of an Arbor Day last year for April 24th, 2020. Unfortunately, after that, our planned Arbor Day celebrations in the town this past year had to be canceled for obvious reasons. And again, the Tree Committee will be in touch to request this coming year a mayoral proclamation for an Arbor Day date for 2021. Oregon, just for your information, Oregon Arbor Month is this coming month of April, and the National Arbor Day is set for April 30th of this year. So Kate will be in touch with you to get another proclamation soon. And then, one little quick thing about the Arbor Day proclamation, we should, the city receive a little Tree City USA plaque sometime in March, and we'll certainly be passing that on to the city staff once we receive that. And basically, the last thing, as we continue down our path this coming year, my hope is that the Tree Committee will be able to make a bit of progress on recognizing and protecting trees in our urban forest environments. So let us know how we can work together this coming year. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for applying, and we're excited that we won. And yes, I'm sure we will declare an Arbor Day, and it kind of comes, I think it's around, Earth Day is around in the same time, so we'll get together and get that figured out. Thank you so much.
Yeah, okay, you're welcome.
Susan Crowley.
Hi there. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Susan Crowley, for the record, and I think that you must understandably feel that you're kind of operating in a vacuum these days. You can't see faces, but people are aware of the good work you're doing. And I just wanted to thank you so much, because there's been a lot of discussion on council lately of taking concrete steps with regard to land acquisition for parks and trails before it's all gone. And I think that's just wonderful news, and I've been following a lot of what's been going on between yourselves and Parks and Rec, and I know how much work has gone into progress so far. And especially as, you know, everything gets more residentially dense, and there is fewer space for yards and gardens, it's especially important that all Oregonians have a place to go and enjoy the green world. So I wanted to thank you for your work so far and work to come. I think that you'll find a huge amount of citizen support for efforts to develop granting strategy and a bond action if that happens. And wanted to also mention the idea that was floated by the mayor of a shadow plan to kind of make things more concrete on the ground, and then start actually approaching possibly interested landowners when and if energy allows, is a wonderful idea, and would be a great thing to see start. So thanks very much. I just wanted to say it's much appreciated. It is not invisible at all. People are aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate your praise. It's a lot of hard work, but we've been, we've been at it, and thank you so much for your appreciation. All right, we have a couple presentations this evening, and Rachel is going to introduce our presenters this evening.
Great. Thank you, Mayor McBride, councilors. On February 8th, council had a presentation from Echo Northwest on what an affordable housing strategy is and why it is useful for the city to develop one explicitly for permanent affordable housing. This is consistent with the work planned project that you have. So tonight, we're going to hear from two of our community partners to talk about their work on affordable housing. They will give the city council an overview of who they serve and how they do it. And so I'm really pleased to welcome Anne Menbach for the Big River Land Trust, and Joel Matson from the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority. And Joel's going to go first, and then we'll turn it over to Anne. Joel, it looks like you've been promoted, but you'll need to unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. And sorry, I just got cut off of the meeting, and then now I'm back. So apologize for that. I wasn't sure if I was going first or Anne. So thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Joel Matson, the Executive Director of Mid-Columbia Housing Authority and Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation. And our organizations work together to promote and administer affordable housing solutions throughout the Mid-Columbia region for unlocking access to clean, safe, and affordable housing for lower-income households throughout the region. While we have a complexity of this organization's structure, we really try to break that down for the people we work with. And again, these three organizations work together on the common mission of promoting and administering affordable housing throughout the five-county region. Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation is our nonprofit 501(c)(3) that's been in existence since 1991, and the two housing authorities are a public housing entity serving the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority, serving the Oregon side of the river, and the Columbia Gorge Housing Authority serving the Washington side of the river. As I mentioned, our organizations work toward promoting affordable housing, and we value that our work and the affordable homes that we create help children in learning, they help parents in earning, and they're rooted in families' ability to provide a better future for themselves. Our work takes us across a pretty wide swath of socio-economic strata of families that we work with, and our primary lines of business are within these four lines of business. So we administer rent assistance programs. We work with program participants and residents of our properties for asset building and other resident services. We're housing developers, so we own, operate, and develop affordable housing communities. And we also work in the homeownership realm, working with current and future homeowners in a variety of areas. More specifically, our Housing Choice Voucher Program is one of the largest rent assistance programs that we administer throughout our region. We serve on any given month over 880 households and invest over $480,000 in rent assistance directly into our private rental market throughout the region. In Hood River County particularly, we currently have about 93 households participating in the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We have over 160 households on our Housing Choice Voucher waitlist throughout Hood River County. I also want to add that this is a really low number of participation of households within the Hood River County area. We see almost 400 some households that are participating in Wasco County, and it tells us as an organization that our Housing Choice vouchers are just not competitive in the rental market throughout Hood River County, unfortunately, which leads us to why we need to do more in some of our other lines of business that we continue to work on. We also administer other state and local rent assistance programs like Shelter Plus Care, which is a permanent rent assistance program for disabled households and who are chronically homeless. We have a tenant-based rent assistance that's federally funded for previously homeless households, and we work with our partners at Mid-Columbia Center for Living to work with folks who are identified as having serious and persistent mental illness and have direct rent assistance to that particular population as well. We've also been involved, particularly in the last nine to 10 months, with the all-hands-on-deck approach of a COVID-19 response. We've been able to attract additional federal housing choice vouchers to our region, which is pretty significant for our area. So we've been able to attract addition, 110 additional vouchers. We've been partnering with local governments for administration of CDBG, CV1 funds, particularly for emergency rent assistance, where, in this case, the city of the Dells is the applicant, local sponsor, and we'll be working on a regional emergency rent assistance program through that application if successful. Similarly, we're working with Clickatac County as the applicant for a regional application for the CV1 funds in Clickatac and Skamane Counties. We're also collaborating with the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council on two COVID-related tenant-based rent relief programs. To date, we've been able to invest about 100, 1.5 million in the private rental market, serving over 150 households that have had financial hardship due to the COVID pandemic. We're also working with the state of Oregon on administering the Landlord Compensation Fund, which is a state general fund program that will assist landlords with back paying or re-reduce throughout our region. Those are just a few ways that we've been coming to the table to support COVID-19 response. I mentioned one of our activities is working with program participants and residents at our properties to access appropriate services in the community. And here, I'll just highlight a few of the service programs that we work within. We help people navigate the voucher program and finding stable housing with a collaboration of what's called the Bridges to Health Pathways Program. It's a collaboration with the Columbia Gorge Health Council, where we provide intensive services to help people achieve their highest needs. We also work with program participants to become self-sufficient, work on goal-setting savings, et cetera, to realize their dreams and their goals. Potentially, that's homeownership. Other times, we see folks save for starting a business or other important life savings events that we work with. We conduct specific financial education courses through the program framework that we call Your Money, Your Goals, and have hosted many classes, both in English and Spanish throughout the region. These are just a few examples of how we're connecting our program participants and our residents to services in our region. This slide, it shows a footprint of Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation's affordable housing communities that we've developed over time as an organization. You can see that we span west and north Bonneville here, all the way to eastern Clickatac County and central Sherman County as well. So our portfolio consists of 389 apartment homes at 23 different property locations. 119 of those apartment homes are in, actually, the city of Hood River. We have another project that's outside of the city, but 119 of those apartment homes are specifically in the city of Hood River. We, I do want to mention that within this portfolio of 119 homes that we have, we maintain a pretty steady waitlist, unfortunately. So our one-bedroom waitlists are, we have about 120 households that are on our waitlist for the one-bedroom units particularly. We have 184 households on the two-bedroom waitlist, 63 households on three-bedroom waitlist, and those are just for the 119 apartment homes that we own and operate in the city of Hood River. We continue to look for those development opportunities, and have partnered with local jurisdictions in the past, and look forward to doing that in the future to be able to create more affordable homes throughout the region. One example that I wanted to lift up is one that we're working on currently with Clickatac County, where they acquire approximately six acres of land on the, that they've been turned around and leased to us for 99 years for the purposes of a community development. And we're working with them in the Phase 1 part of the development for an assisted living facility that will have an affordability commitment tied to that as well. Again, we continue to seek opportunities to add affordable housing options into the local housing stock, and have recognized that we need to do more, not only on the rental housing work that we've done for years and built out this portfolio, but we're also looking to homeownership opportunities to further that development activity as well. And along those lines, so we're, we work with current and future homeowners through a variety of different programs. Homebuyer services, which may include the ABCs of home buying and accessing other resources to realize their dream of becoming a homeowner. We administer down payment assistance programs, and we also administer minor home repair programs that keep people in their homes. Oftentimes, our investments to the minor home repair program are accessibility upgrades that allow people to age in place and stay in their home should they desire. We work with homeowners who may be facing foreclosure for a variety of reasons, and when it makes sense to do so, we help them navigate avoiding the foreclosure process. And as an organization, we've been building our expertise on the shared equity model for homeownership, as we see that as a potentially viable opportunity for helping lower-income households get into homeownership and perpetuate that affordability into the future for our communities. So in 2020, we've assisted over 30 people purchase homes, with eight of those 30 purchasing homes within the city of Hood River. And that assistance comes through a variety of the programs that we've offered, but I wanted to just call out the total value of the homes that were purchased through those eight households was over $2.4 million that we've helped people access in building their equity. I also wanted to just acknowledge that 23 of the 30 total families that we've assisted just in 2020 identify as Hispanic or Latino households. As part of this work, we were able to award seven families $15,000 each in down payment for forgivable loans through funding through Oregon Housing and Community Services. That was primarily driven to folks earning 100% area median income and below for the down payment assistance programs. And in 2020, state and federal moratoriums on foreclosures stopped foreclosures for much of the year, but we did work with over five or five households in Hood River County through avoiding foreclosure in this last year. As I mentioned earlier, we continue to build our expertise with shared equity as a model for affordable housing, and we're excited to be working with Adams Creek Cohousing Development, which many of you may be well aware of, their activities. And they've had a longstanding commitment for having two of their 25 units dedicated to an affordable, be an affordable option for community members. So we've been working closely with them on helping them realize that goal, and what will look like, most likely look like us partnering with them for the administration of the shared equity model for two of those homes that they have within their co-housing development. Again, just want to say a special thanks to that group for their commitment to affordable housing, and look forward to working with them to realize their goal. With that, that really ends my presentation about who we are and what we do, and the highlights of a few of our program areas throughout the five-county region. And Mayor McBride, or Rachel, I'm not sure if you'd like me to take questions at this point. I'm happy to do so.
Sure. I think that we should do questions now, because people kind of have your presentation fresh, and we'll try not to take too long, because we don't want to put off the second presentation too long. But let's see if people have questions. Let me see if I can get this screen share off here. Okay. Technical difficulties. Okay, does anyone have questions? Eric?
Hi, Joel. Can you hear me? Hey, thanks for your presentation tonight. I appreciate it. I'm not sure if you're aware, I assume you might be aware that the city has taken some steps to purchase some property off of Rand Road. And I was just curious if you had, just at a really high level, if you had a sense of what might be able to be accomplished there, and if you saw any role there for your organization. I'm not putting you on the spot to any commitments. I'm just, just at a high level, wanted to get your feedback, since I know you've been involved in housing so much in our area, to kind of your hit on Rand Road and what the city might be able to do there.
Counselor Haney, thank you for the question, and I just want to say thank you for investing and purchasing the property on Rand Road, particularly with the goal of utilizing that property, if at all possible, for creating more affordable housing opportunities in the city. I mean, that's a, it's a novel goal, and I really appreciate the investment that the city has made. As an organization, we have not committed a bunch of resources or time in really diving in specifically on that parcel to see what can be accomplished. Globally, we look forward to being a partner with the city and helping to carry out the goals that you all identify as the priority for that site. We have, in the past, taken on in other development opportunities, really a lot more intentional pre-development work on particular sites, and I just wanted to acknowledge that we have not done that on Rand Road. So I can't give you a good idea at all about how many units or what sort of financial makeup is going to make the most bang for your buck on producing affordable units on Rand Road. We look forward to that opportunity when the time's right to do so, to help align with the goals of the council.
Thank you.
Others? Mark? And then Jessica.
Hey, Joel. Hope everything's going good, and you're actively busy. This is good. Could you just talk for a couple seconds about whether the math that made the earlier development difficult in Hood River, and, you know, the vouchers difficult in Hood River, or the powers that be changing any of the rules that would, that would make us more a better fit for programs with you guys?
Counselor Zan Miller, thanks for the question. So to me, I hear two kind of questions in there. One is around the voucher program, and, you know, what's going on with that that's leading to not being able to be competitive enough? And then the other is around previous development activity, and I guess I'm implying, trying to pick out what you're really asking is about...
It was my understanding is that that didn't score well because of something about the city, and I'm just wondering if that stuff's going to be cleared up for future development.
So let me take the voucher question first, and then to the development question second. So the Housing Choice Voucher Program, there are requirements at the federal contracting level that limit the amount that the housing authority can pay on behalf of a household to what's called the fair market rent. And that's a HUD-published standard where we are capped on how much we can pay for any given unit in a market. That program is never intended to pay market value. It's not intended to lead the market. It's intended to support lower-income households access some levels of the market, but never to lead the market. So in emerging market like Hood River, it makes it less competitive. Those vouchers are really hard to be competitive. One way to have those really function in the market of Hood River is to do what's called project basing those vouchers. The organization, Mid-Columbia Housing Authority, did intend to project base some vouchers specifically for the Morrison Park development, and that would be some potential opportunity for partnership with the city, possibly for, you know, future development in the city of Hood River, is to be able to project base some of those Housing Choice vouchers. To your question about development resources and the needs-based scoring that have, has impacted previous applications in Hood River, I haven't dug in again, because we don't have an active development as an organization in Hood River to know the ins and outs of those, the changes to the funding sources. But what I can tell you is that some sources are very competitive and continue to be very competitive, and it's a question that we're going to have to take at the time when a development is ready to be able to take in to those funding sources to really review and critique. Also, just be reminded, that was a specific funding source that was being sought for that development, and there may be other funding mechanisms that can help us achieve the goal for future development in Hood River. So I don't want that one funding source or that one issue to be a detriment to setting the goal of producing more affordable housing in the city of Hood River.
I'll jump in. My question was about the shared equity. If you could talk a little bit more about, I guess, what does that mean specifically on the homeownership?
Sure. So we, thank you, Counselor Metta. Thanks for the question. So our organization has been looking at the shared equity model as a way to perpetuate affordability and homeownership. Community land trusts use shared equity primarily in their models, and we are looking at it similarly, whether it's a community land trust or part of other program investment. We understand that that shared equity provision is what helps to perpetuate the affordability in part for future affordable homeowners. So in the case of like Adams Creek Cohousing, in order to help maintain the affordability of those two of the 25 units, we're factoring in and trying to figure out how do we impose a ground lease on those two units, where a provision in that ground lease is sharing the equity that... Where a provision in that ground lease is sharing the equity that the homeowner would share with the development at the time of sale. That can help it be affordable into years to come. So again, it's, it's one way of perpetuating affordability. And in this case, it's specific to homeownership. I'm sure Big River Land Trust is going to speak a lot more toward this concept as well because it's really a pillar to their work is by understanding as well.
Thank you and thanks for being here, Joel.
I think you said my name. Hi Joel, thanks for being here. I appreciate you talking about the, and I'm going to butcher this, but you know, more senior housing you're building, it sounds like on the other side of the river. And I'm wondering if that involves, you know, some different or more expanded support or management? If you could talk about that.
Yeah, Counselor Saunders, thanks. And thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. So we are specifically looking at an assisted living facility and also an element of that is going to be memory care. So that's a whole nother level of onsite services and onsite management that we bring in and partner with in order to maintain the, the long-term management of the, of the facility. I mentioned, you know, we have 389 units in our portfolio. We have an existing assisted living facility that we developed back in the late 90s. And have had a longstanding partnership with this organization that we've utilized in the management of that assisted living. And we look forward to continuing that partnership with that particular organization on, on this development in the White Salmon area as well. Across our portfolio of existing properties that we've developed, about a third of our portfolio is for folks who are aging. And you know, it's not all assisted living, but it's dedicated to the households that are 55 and older, as an example. Another third of our portfolio is dedicated to low wage earning working households. And then the, the last third of our portfolio is typically dedicated toward people living less able than you and I, so a specific disability. And so even in that portfolio, we're seeing households served typically up to 80 or 60% of the area median income. Although some units are where households are eligible to live at those units up to, earning up to 80% of the area median income.
A slight second on to my question. We, so we've been getting these community presentations the last few meetings about other, you know, community health needs, including mental health. And in a previous one, they talked about supportive housing being something that isn't really a service in town. And I'm wondering, you know, in the vein of this assisted living type facility, is that in some future world, if that were to ever happen, is that something you could see being a fit for the housing authority to partner with folks to, to help manage? Or is that something that would be somewhat totally different? Or what are your thoughts?
So Counselor Saunders, I certainly supportive housing and supported housing is a need in our community. And I think as much as we can integrate it into the community as a whole, I think that's, that's great. I do think that we need to be thinking about specific developments that could bring the required site-based services for that population, particularly to the site. So there's a lot of complexity there that we'd want to be, go in with eyes wide open about the right partners, the right spot to be able to provide the high level of services that are needed to the population that you're trying to house in the development. That's what we do in a lot of our developments, right? Is almost start with kind of who's the population we're trying to serve? And then bring together the development team and the owner and the management team and our partners to be able to carry out that development into the long haul. You know, it's our organization's mission to provide these affordable housing communities throughout the region. And we're dedicated to the affordability and the viability of those developments for the long haul. Oftentimes we're committing to both the funding commitments and the service level commitments for over 60 years. When we're signing up for these developments at the beginning, if not more than 60 years. So it's really important to us that we do it right. We do it well. And that we stay attentive to the needs of our residents and the development itself.
Thank you, Joel.
Thanks, Mary. You are on mute in the city, just for your information. Good to see you, Joel. It's been a long time. Good to see your face, albeit remotely. So you had mentioned some, there was kind of a low number of units that were receiving rental assistance. Can you kind of give us an idea of why you think that is? You've mentioned something about the market.
Yeah, so our, our, thanks Counselor Cavanhan. Our organization has a, what we call an annual budget authority and annual contribution contract where we have essentially 551 vouchers that can be in play within Hood River, Wasco and Sherman Counties. So it's a, it's a true form of a market-based solution to affordable housing. And when a tenant or program participant applies for that program, the theory is that they can take the voucher that we're providing, which pays a portion of the rent on their behalf directly to the private rental market. They can take it to anywhere in those three counties that they choose. So by nature of us seeing that a lot more utilization is occurring in Wasco County, for example, than Hood River County. Even though the population, total population is really similar, it, it makes us question, why is that not working in Hood River County? So I have some assumptions for why that is. I've mentioned earlier to Counselor Zane Miller's question that it's never intended to push the market. So when you have rapid rise in housing costs, voucher participants are often not competitive enough in that market. Also, what we see is that there is a lot more diversity in housing stock in particularly the DOWs than there are, than there is in Hood River and other areas of Hood River County. So that, the work that the city of Hood River is doing to promote more and a diverse housing stock, not just single family homes, right? Could hopefully over time help in creating more opportunities for leveraging that federal assistance to help those lower income households utilize the housing choice voucher in the Hood River market.
Thanks, Joel. And thanks for what you do.
Thanks, Joel. I have a one question that I was asked on Radio Tiara. I was on Radio Tiara on Saturday. And one of the subjects that was, we kind of delved into was housing a bit. And I actually plugged your organization and asked them to give you a call. And they may be calling you to be interviewed on one of their programs. Because they just had some questions about, I think part of it was about multi-generational houses where, you know, they have a family of four, you know, two, two, a couple with two kids. And then, you know, grandma passes away and grandpa needs to move in, but grandpa's working a little bit. And he makes, he puts their total income, you know, $50 a month over. And so I said, you know, I can't answer that question. And so I did ask them to, to get ahold of you to maybe to speak on the radio because they had some, some questions. But we talked quite a bit about Rand Road and I, I just wanted to emphasize again and make sure I have these numbers right. Right now, for Hood River only, you said the people waiting for a house, like if someone happened to move out of the current inventory that you guys have, there's 120 households waiting for one bedrooms, 184 for two bedrooms and 63 for three bedrooms. Was that correct?
Mayor McBride, yeah, that, those are the numbers as of this morning. And that's just for the 119 units that we own and operate as an organization in the city of Hood River. So there are other affordable housing communities that are operated by private developers in Hood River that are probably more than those, the total units that we are actually involved in. So I just want to make sure that you're aware, that's just for the 119 units that we own and operate and manage. That's our current waitlist for those units.
Okay, so you know, we're somewhere, I mean, if you just rounded everything up just a little bit because there's others, you know, we're talking 500 units could be, people could go into those today if we had them. That's kind of what you're saying. Okay, all right. I think that's my takeaway from, from this is that there is a huge need for, for housing here. So, thank you. Appreciate you coming to speak.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yeah, great. All right. Back to you, Rachel, or let, we can go right on ahead with Ann.
Mayor, I think we can just go right on, right ahead with Ann Menbach. My counselors, mayor, staff, nice to see you all. Thanks for letting me come and talk to you again tonight. I also wanted to thank Joel. I'm constantly amazed at how many services they offer and what a good job they do. So thanks, Joel, for continuing that awesome work. So I'm Ann Menbach and I am the founder and president of Big River Community Land Trust. Most of you know me and what we're doing. But first, before I get started, I just wanted to thank you. Last year, you provided us with a letter that we used for our 501(c)(3) application to the IRS and we were successful with your help in getting that status in January. So thank you. We couldn't have done that without you. Okay, so with that, I'll just jump right in. So we're a Big River Community Land Trust and we're a nonprofit, locally organized group that holds land for the benefit of our community. And our goal is to provide secure and affordable access to home ownership for our residents. We serve Hood River and Clickatatt Counties. We serve low to middle income earners, making between 80 and 120% of median family income. And our mission is to develop a steward and stable supply of permanently affordable, sustainably built homes for sale. And that is our only mission. So what's the problem and how can we help? So as you all know, and we've beat each other over the head with it, we have an affordability gap problem here in the Columbia Gorge. And what that means is essentially what you make and what you can afford, there's a huge gap between those two. So in Clickatatt County for a median income earner, there is a $72,000 gap between what they make and what they can afford as far as a home for sale for them. In Hood River County, that number is 160,000. So as we all know, that is a big issue. And when I listened in to your presentation from Eco Northwest last week, I think that was, there was some discussion about why that gap happens. And just a little insight into that is that your development costs are going to be the same. If your house as a developer is going to have an end price of 200,000 or 400,000. Your SDCs, your lot price is all going to be the same. So in the market side, there's really not an incentive to build those houses for the people in the middle income. And then for organizations who want to focus on sort of the lower income, 80% below, there's lots of grants, both federal and state grants available. But if you're working sort of in that gap between 80 to 120%, there's really not a lot of incentives or grant funding to help you subsidize those homes and, and close that gap. And that's really where the CLT comes in. So again, the affordability issue has not been solved. What we're trying to help folks understand is that a CLT is a tool that can help solve that problem. So in your community toolbox, we want to be the tool that you reach for to help with currently affordable home ownership, which is our singular focus for median income earners here in the gorge. How do we work? So essentially a CLT secures the land. We can either secure raw land and develop it, or we can secure homes that already exist. And we do that through donations, through land leases, through purchase. We can really secure that asset in many different ways. Then if the land is raw, we can develop that land, build homes. And then our goal is to sell those homes to an income eligible buyer, somebody making between 80 to 120. We don't sell the land, and this is the key, we keep that land in trust for the community for future home ownership. The land lease to the homeowner is 99 years. It's very long term. It's inheritable and it's renewable. So essentially it's as close to fee simple as you can get for a ground lease. Again, the CLT retains ownership and that's where the power of the CLT is. We're there for the long term to hold that land in trust for affordability. The appreciation is capped, so the homeowner still appreciates the value of the home and can take advantage of that appreciation. But it's not appreciating at the same rate as the rest of the market. It's capped. Joel mentioned a shared equity model. Many CLTs use shared equity models either exclusively or on a project basis. And that's the goal of Big River too. We would use that model on a project basis, basis if it made sense. And then the CLT facilitates a sale to another income eligible buyer. Once the original buyer has moved on. Maybe they move into the, the market and that's where we really, we really want them to go. So perpetual affordability, again, Eco Northwest talked about this a little bit. And I kind of want to bring that into the realm of municipality and your goals for subsidies. So as a municipality, if you are going to subsidize a house or a home or a development, you want to make sure that that subsidy lasts as long as it can. And that affordability is stretched out over as many families and as many ownerships or rent opportunities as possible. So that can be accomplished through deed restrictions. I've heard you talk about that a little bit. Deed restrictions are great. They are control, but there are some issues with those. There's sometimes, depending on how you structure it, no third party to monitor that affordability. So he's going to make sure that the house, when it sells again, goes to somebody that makes the range you're hitting, depending on how, again, it's structured and you make sure that your appreciation isn't happening too fast. And again, if the house needs subsidy later on down the road, again, who's going to provide that subsidy? The CLT model sort of addresses all those things. They're responsible for the land and its affordability for the long term into perpetuity. You know, our 501(c)(3) status is based on us meeting those income requirements of 80 to 120. Additionally, our appreciation again is capped, so you can only make a certain amount per year, which keeps the homes affordable for longer. This helps retain the public investment in the homeownership by retaining that subsidy for longer. And the CLT can also backstop home buyers. So we can help prevent foreclosure by working with the homeowners within our, our inventory and our portfolio. And if that doesn't work and we've gotten them all the help we can, the CLT always retains a purchase option for the home. Benefits of the CLT model, again, so we eliminate the land price from the home in Hood River County. That accounts for about 25% of most housing costs. Land is held in perpetuity just for home ownership that's affordable. Homes are removed from the speculative market and brought into the affordable market for the long term. CLT homes build wealth for the homeowner. Again, that's the number one way that Americans build wealth. And so we help owners do that and again, retain that additional subsidy. So what happens if a home is subsidized and there are no controls on it? Well, we have a little example here. In 2005, this home was built by some great developers here in Hood River. It was sold for the initial price of 171,500, which was affordable for those making 80 to 120. 16 years later, it was sold with no controls on the affordability for 427,000. This was no longer affordable for people making between 80 and 120. The subsidy was lost and this inventory for affordable housing is lost. If that home would have been a CLT home from the beginning, at our 1.5% capped appreciation rate, it would still only be $217,000 and well within the range of the 80 to 120 affordability. So that just kind of gives you an example of why some sort of control on anything you subsidize is so important. Homeowner benefits. Homeowner benefits. So, some folks are a little concerned about the appreciation that a homeowner is going to gain with a CLT model. Think of the CLT as a bridge between being a renter and being an owner. Yes, your appreciation is capped, but you are still gaining appreciation within your home. And six out of 10 CLT homeowners will move on to a market rate home and then leave the CLT home for another family to move into. So you can see some of the numbers, this is based on some data from Proud Ground. And again, CLTs really help owners break out from renting into owning and gaining that, that equity and that wealth generation capability. So who do we serve? Again, 80 to 120, this is from your Housing Needs Analysis. We service these people right here in this purple box. Quite a range of incomes. And most of them are first time home buyers, so again, helping them bridge that gap between renting and owning. How do we make homes affordable? A few different ways. First of all, remove the land cost from the price of the home. We reduce the home size, so these aren't going to be, you know, 2,000 square feet homes. These are going to be smaller homes that are compact, well-designed, well-built, with a cost to construct between 175, about, and about $250,000. You'll see here, and this will come up again later, SDC fees on these are about 10% of the cost, a little bit over that. And the land cost is about 25%, we're trying to take that out. And again, we want to increase density in our developments to allow for more affordable homes within each one. So where are we, what are our goals? This year, we got our 501(c)(3) status, well, in 2020, so about a year ago. This has been a building year, again, we're 100% volunteer. Here, we have a fantastic board and we've put together some great processes and organizational structures such as our ground lease, which really sets the way that we're going to operate. We've created strengthened partnerships and continue to do that. And our goals this year are to secure land and kick off our initial project, develop three homes and sell them, and then over the next 10 years, our goal is still 100 Big River CLT homes within the gorge on both sides of the river. So are we just kind of an outlier, what is the CLT thing, are there others that we can, that we can look to for models? Yes and yes. Here's a few that have varying degrees of establishment. Shalane Valley was right in front of us and they created Land Trust in 2019. They now have four homes available in building, Bend, Oregon. Established in 2014, have 10 homes available, and then Jackson Hole, Wyoming, which has been around for quite a long time, has 146 homes and additional land that they're ready to build on. And so these are just a few of the success stories. There's five active in Oregon and 15 in Washington and CLTs just keep growing as their capabilities become recognized for communities. So how, how can you help? I want to thank you for including us in discussions of opportunities as a stakeholder and I'd like to ask for that to continue. We would like donate lots at Rand Row for us to develop homes on, once you get there. This is in the very beginning stages, but we would like to be in line for those lots. We're looking for potential SDC reductions or help and permit efficiencies to help our homes move forward. Density bonuses to the CLT. And we'd love to help you understand more about what a CLT can do and how we can help our current, our current housing crisis. So with that, I'll stop the share. Open it up to any questions that you might have.
Megan?
Hi Ann, nice to see you. I have two kind of random questions, but you mentioned that the Land Trust owns the land, is there any model where you could have land leased from other public entities and, and still do this kind of model?
Yes, yep, you can do a land lease to a land lease, it just depends on the terms of your land lease with the public entity. So that's been done like in Core for, in Bend, Oregon did that with the community college. So they partnered and had two, two long-term land leases, the college and then the CLT to the homeowner to make that work. So yes, that could work.
Okay, awesome. And then is there any difference in costs or management between having like one or two homes over in this corner versus having a larger development of, you know, 10 or 30, or does that change anything in the model?
I mean, it all depends on how much everything is and if you're going to do, you know, scale it, then it's always, you know, you get some cost efficiencies if you've got more, but I mean, two new homes would be great as well. And again, if you're using a shared equity models or some other community land trust model, which there are a few, the Land Trust can afford to pay for some of these things and so some of the lots and some of the development costs. So really it just depends on, on the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim?
Thanks Mayor, and thanks Ann for your presentation. I'm wondering, is there, how does, how does the bank, how do banks view loans on the houses, having a separate land house issue going on?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. So it's not, it's not standard, it's not typical, but there are a couple of banks here in the gorge that have worked with CLTs and are familiar with the CLT model. And that's really the biggest hurdle, is having a bank that is already, already has some understanding of the model. You can have new banks or new lenders jump on board, it just takes a little more time to educate them. But we're lucky enough to have a couple of banks that have already had experience and so we're not too concerned about that at this point.
So that's not really a drawback?
No.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ann, do you have any idea if the rates would be different for someone trying to do that?
They may be a little higher depending on your bank and how experienced they are and what kind of mortgage options they have. They may be a little bit higher.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Tim.
Sorry, I forgot my second question, the second question was that you, you had mentioned that you concentrate on homeownership, but not necessarily rentals, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, well, there's a few different reasons for that. Lots of CLTs do both. And you have to have the capacity to do both and we're starting out. And also, we don't see anybody else in the market serving that 80 to 120 home ownership gap. There's not really anybody else doing it. Joel's organization does a fantastic job at servicing the 80% and below. And we're just really wanting to fill that gap of home, homeownership and in the median income. Nobody is doing right now and which is sorely needed.
Thank you.
And also, we want to focus on it and do it really, really well. So if we started and tried to do everything at once, we probably wouldn't be successful. But focusing on one thing really, really well, we think we can do that.
Thanks.
Others? Mark?
Thanks for coming in and telling, giving us an update and congratulations on the 501(c)(3), that's awesome.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just curious, how, what the, if you could provide a summary of your fundraising, you know, that, that builds the development pot of money that I assume that you need to kick things off and, and, you know, how many units could you start today kind of thing?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. So we're working on our fundraising plan right now. We sort of got knocked down a little bit with the pandemic like everybody else did. So honestly, the last year has been as a 100% voluntary organization. We haven't gotten as much done as we would like to have gotten done. So we've got a number of folks working with us right now on our marketing plan. We've got a whole array of options of how we're moving forward with that. We've talked with a number of foundations and private funding sources and now understand, well, as of last year, understand better what they need. And so we're working on our fundraising ladder, as it were, from small local investments up to larger foundational investments and eventually into the, the grant writing, federal and state limited amounts of funding that's available once we get started. Does that answer your question? Yep.
Others with questions? Eric?
Hi there, thank you for, for coming this evening, I've appreciated your presentation. Similar to Tim's question, I was wondering how, when a, when a buyer uses bank debt to purchase, I assume the trustee does not hit the land, right? It's only, the only collateral is the, the house and not the land, so you're not
That's right.
amortizing somebody else's debt?
Yep, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great, thank, thank you Ann for your explanation of, did you have another question, Megan? Oh, you're just waving, okay, all right. Thank you Ann so much.
Thank you everybody, have a great night.
Yeah, yeah, really appreciate your presentation.
Mayor, you're, you're muted, Mayor.
I'm trying to keep myself muted so I don't make a lot of noise when I'm not supposed to be, but sorry about that, you guys. I'm going to open the work session and we don't have anything in our work session unless there's any additions, is there any additions, Rachel?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so we will go ahead and adjourn the work session and open the regular session. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections for that, Rachel?
Mayor, I would mention that items four and five were reversed in your packet, I believe Jen made you aware of this.
Right.
They're both there, they're just reversed, okay.
Okay, so the regular business items, item four and five will be switched. We have a consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they need to remove from that or conflicts or anything? Or specific question? Okay. Could I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
One second.
I have a motion from Jessica and a second from Tim to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote, Megan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jessica?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. And Gladys is not in attendance this evening, just so we have, we have that on the record, if someone can't see us this evening. All right, regular business items. Request for fee waiver from Hood River Lions Club, Rachel?
Yeah, Mayor McBride, counselors, this is a request for fee waiver. We're essentially a request for the city to support the Lions Club in the Music in the Park series this year. The Lions Club, as you know, is reconstructing the stage at, at Jackson Park, it's a donation of more than $100,000 to the community. Council approved this last year and we're very grateful to this service organization. They have also agreed to coordinate Music in the Park this year. I guess I should give you the caveat that we are not scheduling any events yet. The city will continue to follow Oregon Health Authority guidelines. We've made all of our potential event partners aware of that. We're coordinating and collaborating with the port so that we make sure we're giving consistent information to the community, but, but we, they aren't able to move forward with their plans without, without an answer to this question. So we decided to just go ahead and bring this, this fee waiver request to you and for your consideration and potentially your approval tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council.
Great, thank, thank you, Rachel. So just, we start the discussion on fee waiver and the amount is $717, which would be for four events in August. Thoughts on this, as long as we're in a, a way that we can go forward in August and hopefully our, our numbers are going to be down enough that we aren't going to be in the high category for risk. And I know everyone's looking forward to getting to that point if we possibly can. Thoughts on it? Mark? Oh, is, I think I have a bunch of thumbs up or hands up, I'm not sure.
I was just saying thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
The sort of letting Mike go back to his old hobby, yeah.
Okay, Mark's has, Megan?
I guess I just have a one question first and then a comment. But do we normally waive the fee for the school district when they have been hosting families in the park?
Counselor, thank you for the question. The, the school district and the city charge each other for use of facilities.
Thank you. But I'm, I'm going to maybe be the, the downer and ask the question of, I guess there's, I mean, I, you know, I know this is an incredibly valued community event and I know we all want to get back to normal and have these community events, but I'm wondering if there's a, a level of, even if it's allowed and we, you know, permitted under the guidelines, is that different than us actively supporting and promoting it? And do we want to be doing that? Since it is generally, in the past, it has been a very large event.
Are you seeing for COVID reasons, Megan? My, my support was assuming that CDC and Governor Brown and everyone else says that's an okay thing to do, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it, I'll go, you're next Jessica. I'm in favor of waiving the fee and I'm, I think I'm considering this as special circumstance because of COVID-19 year and we're trying to get us back together as a community. And maybe next year the school district will take it back over, but I feel like the Lions Club has done so much for this particular event for so many years and put so much money into it. And they're going to be spending a lot of money themselves on this this year, if, if we can go forward. That it's just kind of a special circumstance to bring the community back together and so that's why I'm in favor of it this year. Jessica?
Yeah, I just, I was going to say stuff that you said, Mayor. And I don't think us waiving the fee means that we're down on having these giant events, you know, tomorrow. I'm sure the Lions Club would be extremely careful and meet whatever the governor's orders are at that time.
Eric?
Yeah, I would join what Jessica said and sort of Mark's assumption. My assumption as well is that this would only proceed if we're allowed to proceed and it made sense from a COVID perspective. So based on that assumption, I am enthusiastically in support of this and would like to publicly thank the Lions Club for not only furthering the vision of Jackson Park as a community gathering place, kind of period, plus for music and Mike Shen's commitment to this area throughout his whole career. The other thing that's sort of going on the background is community education and I'm, you know, I'm not a school district expert, but my sense is that they're not really operating at all this year, their executive director, if I can use that term, left and they, I think they didn't rehire because there was no need to because everything's sort of in COVID. So it was, it wasn't like they were canceling community education, certainly that's not my hope, but rather they're just being good stewards of the public dollar during COVID to not hire a position that was just going to twiddle his or her thumb. So my hope and vision for the school district would be to replace that position and have the school district take this back over. But in the meantime, the Lions Club is not only building us a beautiful new park, but also willing to do the programming, it's a lot of work. So my kudos to Mike Shen and the Lions Club for really supporting the community and it, I, I really hope, you know, COVID willing, we can all get back together and, and share some community time together in that park.
Do I have a motion on this then? I think I've, I think we have a majority of people who have spoken that are in favor of it. There's a motion on page 39.
I'll make a motion that COVID rules allowing, we approved the fee waiver request by the Hood River Lions Club for families in the park. I'll make a motion that COVID rules allowing, we approved the fee waiver request by the Hood River Lions Club for families in the park on tonight's, oh, I don't know how to do that. I'll just, period. Yeah.
Okay, Mark's made a motion.
That was Eric.
That was Eric. Okay, Eric and Eric's made a second. As long as COVID will allow us, the rules will allow us at the time to approve the fee waiver request by Hood River Lions Club for families in the park. Those in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Eric?
Aye.
Tim?
I have a great deal of hope towards more music.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone. All right, city council work plan. Rachel?
Great. Thank you, Mayor, councilors. And I'm pleased to present the city council work plan for adoption. This is the third year of the council work plan, which outlines the city council's highest priority policy projects and serves as the organization's roadmap for the year. The work plan is developed with input from the community, from staff and from the city council, most importantly. Many projects are one-year projects. Some represent a discrete project within a larger project or program and others, like some of our infrastructure projects, will take many years to accomplish. This year timelines were added to provide a general sense of milestones. Staff contact names were added so that the public has a, a place to go for more information and graphics within the document highlight some of our bigger projects. We are also using the city website more effectively as a place to find information on projects. For example, the city recently published a project page for the 780 Ran Road Development Project. And we have recently published a cityofhoodriver.gov/input page where you can go to find three projects where we're currently accepting input. So unless there are questions, there is a motion for the city council to review, to approve and adopt.
Thank, thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it. Yeah, I, I directed some people to, on radio Tiara to some of the projects that we have going and some of the surveys that we have going on Saturday also. So that was, they thought that was very helpful that we have something like that, that it's so easy to get to. Does anyone have any questions about what we went over or comments or anything? Mark?
Again, thanks, Rachel, for the Saturday meeting we had a few weeks ago. That was, I thought that was a super positive and I think everyone came away feeling good. So that, that was pretty nice. Um, my question is that some of the comments in our, in our discussion show up on page 59 in the list of operational projects. But, but they don't show up in the narrative and, and I'm just thinking the, the couple of things are the tree ordinances in the environmental section, the EV plugin for beyond city staff and the parking, you know, continuing with the parking plan. So, so I think I was sort of putting myself in the, you know, when someone says, hey, I thought, you know, what are you guys doing about the parking thing? We, I can point him to page 59. I, I was, I guess hoping from that Saturday discussion that there would be a mention in the, the, the page related to that project. But I, I don't know. I, I mean it more as a question of how do we, as far as communication strategy? Do we think that pointing to page 59 for specific things that aren't mentioned in the narrative is okay? Or do we want to add a word or two? I guess that's my one-winded question.
And Mark, could you mention those three things again? What were they? The parking plan, the EV?
And, and yeah, EV plugin beyond staff. Parking plan implementation, you know, just getting rolling on that.
Right.
And the tree preservation incentives and they all show up on page 59, I think.
So counselor, let me try to address a couple of those. And, and if we, we missed somewhere, happy to, happy to add some more word, words in whatever the, whatever council wants to see. So hybrid vehicles and charging, it does say citywide charging infrastructure. That was the intent was to include that citywide focus.
But it says created, created by the city-owned fleet. Where am I reading it wrong?
So to explore options for hybrid electrical vehicles and citywide charging station infrastructure. So while the purpose would be to reduce it with city-owned fleet, the implication is that they would be citywide.
Okay. I read that as
But I can change the wording. Okay, got it.
Yep.
We'll play around them with that before final publication.
Yeah, and, and these things that, you know, our intentions are really good and it's sort of the four months from now and someone says, well, are you working on this? I want to be able to point to something in the work plan that we talked about, so.
Yeah, sure. I understand. The second one, tree preservation incentives. So the direction from council was to include that when we're looking at other incentives. I'm happy to add some additional language. It doesn't really fit in that list to add.
I, I'm not recommending a whole nother section, so I agree. I was looking to squeeze them into the narrative somehow, but I, I am short of a suggestion. So, so maybe I could even come back after and suggest something or.
I would be happy to put tree preservation incentives in conjunction with other incentives. Something like that.
Yeah, it would be similar in the environment sustainability, I think, probably.
Um, actually, I would disagree there because it is not a separate project and this is, it's included in a project.
Okay. Which, which project is included in? It's included across the whole thing is what you're saying.
That's right. So with the direction from council was that when we look at some of these code updates, when we look at some of the other incentives, for example, for housing, to also include tree preservation incentives. So that we're not, you know, so that we don't just add more and more code on top of more and more code.
Certainly. We're, we're on the same page there for sure.
And then I think the only other one you had was the parking plan implementation, just to note that we're, we're do, we are working on it.
Right.
Just some, somewhere.
It's not on a shelf. I mean, and it's, it's a bullet on page 59, so I'm, I'm hip to that.
Where? It is on page 59?
Yeah, the last bullet in the first section.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'd be happy to take a suggestion and incorporate it into the document.
Okay.
If that's what council would like to see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually okay with, I, I just kept thinking the first word would be parking plan implementation instead of an I, I was looking for a P. So I'm okay with it being right where it is there, but you know, it says operation versus capital. I mean, it is operational, but it also, there'll be some money spent on it too, so. I'm okay with it being there on that list, but. Others? Jessica?
I was going to say, I mean, I, I think I did notice that it was added and also just in general, thank you. I've noticed all the changes from the Saturday version, the, and, and this version's really great. So I mean, I look at the projects that are on 59 and those are all, I mean, it says significant projects and it's kind of misleading because it's just the line, but they really are all very significant projects. So that's where I guess I wasn't sad to see it there because I do, like, there's plenty of other ones on here that are going to be huge projects. So I was okay with it just being in this list and those are all my comments in general.
Thanks, Jessica. Others? Tim?
Thanks, mayor. I guess we have to ask Mark a question. So are you looking, are you, are you wanting to kind of like cross-reference the page 59 to specific projects?
I think so. I was sort of anticipating questions that I would get from people on the street and I wouldn't be able to point to the thing. So I'm, I'm hip to it being on the significant projects list. I was, when I was reading it, looking for the discussion to have tied it into the narrative, but I'm, I am good with the way it is.
Because I mean, if we want to tie it back to specific sections previous to that, you just like list the sections next to the project. So.
Um, I think there's the, the projects in the council work plan are significant policy projects. The projects in the operational list are operational projects that may require council input or approval of a budget item or approval at some point. So the policy work has largely been done on those projects.
And I think, you know, when you say implementation of the parking plan, we have a whole year, almost a year's worth of work that the subcommittee did, that we have a whole huge document on what is the plan and these are, you know, this is section A, 20 different projects. It'll take three years. So I think we could point back to that and, you know, we're, we're ticking those off. I mean, that's, that's the project list. We can point back to that document on that specific one. Tim?
So maybe in a short paragraph or something, we, leading into, on page 59, kind of explaining that those, those aspects of that page. And kind of like separating them, explaining the, the difference between that and the preceding sections. Because I think I, I get what Mark's saying is that, you know, if you just like look at it, you know, it just kind of, you know, I think, you know, I think we understand these relationships, but if somebody else doesn't necessarily, then it's, they're just kind of one-line statements. But again, I don't think that's a criticism, but you know, I, I guess I'm trying to, I, I get what Mark, I think I get what Mark's saying. But tell me if I don't, Mark, if that's not what you're trying to say.
Yeah, it's, it's just about how are we communicating all the good stuff that we're doing? That, that's all.
And I think Rachel's explanation of this, this being operational slash and/or capital projects versus the policy stuff that we went over that was just in the first section. You know, maybe even if there was just two sentences, as Rachel stated them this evening in the meeting, that went right above this, that says, you know, this is the operational stuff. We have documents for a lot of this work already ready to go. Others will take additional input or approvals by council. And the work at the beginning of this document was policy, you know, just something that says that. So maybe we can point people to that. Are you guys good with that? If we just have, I mean, I think we could almost pair it exactly what, how Rachel explained it this evening to put, to put in there. Are you okay with that?
I'm going to vote yes on approving it as, as it is, but, but I, I think that some ideas like that helps the, help the narrative with the community.
Yeah, I think it's just a, an additional communication, making it a little bit easier to communicate to the public. What, what we're doing here. And I think, but I'm, I'm great with this document. I think it's a all-inclusive. There's a lot here. Does anyone have any other questions? If not, we could go with a motion. It's on page 42.
I move to approve and adopt the 2021 City of Hood River work plan.
I second.
Tim has made a motion and Megan has seconded that motion to approve and adopt the 2021 City of Hood River work plan. Additional discussion? Roll call vote. Tim?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Jessica?
I.
Megan?
Yes.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for all that work on that. Thank you for staff. Thank you, Rachel. That was a lot of work to, to do all that and really appreciate it. All right, um, let's see, we are consolidated fee schedule. Will?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So this is an annual action that we go through. I believe we started about 2013, 2014. We began accumulating all of our fees into a, a single spreadsheet that is then reviewed and adjusted for inflation annually. Before that, fees were kind of just on ad hoc resolutions. They sat, you know, got lost. Things would get far out of date. So it's really best practice to accumulate everything together in one place and to keep it adjusted for inflation so flat and real dollars so that you don't sort of shock the system by needing to do big catch-ups in your, in your fees for really any different thing that we, that we charge for. So the fee schedules, fee for service, this is where there's a defined benefit that accrues to one individual or a group, but not the city as a whole. And so we tried to offset our, the city's costs for these services so that we can retain general property tax money, general lodging tax money for things that serve the entire city. So I'll just go sort of quickly summarize the specific things that are changing and then I'll be happy to go into more detail on anything that needs it. So the inflation adjustment this year is 1.5%. That's for, that's the West Coast Urban Consumer Price Index, which is our standard benchmark that we've used. And that's for everything except for system development charges, which is attached to a construction cost inflation index. We are recommending that we permanently remove the fee to set up a municipal court payment plan. That has been sort of temporarily on a pilot basis removed during the COVID-19 and it's working well. We have a new portal online that people can set up payment plans. So it's taking less staff time itself and it's just, these folks are typically lower income and that's the reason why they need a payment plan. So we'll just say it's consistent with city council values to remove that payment plan fee. We are suggesting to add though, a late change of plea fee. And where this comes into play is, you know, often there's, there's folklore out there. I think that gets just passed around that, oh, always plead innocent. And then if the police officer doesn't come to the trial, the judge will have to waive your fee or, you know, waive your ticket. Our officers don't not show up. Our officers always show up. And a surprising amount, you know, offhand, the municipal courts said about a half of people changed their plea the morning of or the night before. And that means that we had to, potentially an officer that was working all night is going to have to work all night the next night, had to stay up, stay in town for 9:00 AM court, just to have a person change their plea from innocent to no contest. Or we needed to pull someone off of answering calls because someone wanted to take a chance that maybe they could get their speeding ticket dismissed. So many cities and we're, this is about what other cities are charging, have a, a fee for once we pass that point of no return where the police officer can't, we need to notice the police officer to come in. So once we pass that, there's a $95 late notice change of plea. This consolidated fee schedule incorporates resolution 2018 that was adopted on October 26th, just rolling in the parking and lieu change. Adjusting administrative planning decision fee to align with most current Oregon revised statutes. Just creating a nominal fee for a practice that's a long, long ongoing practice where we allow other local governments to borrow some of our specialized equipment. Creating a temporary disconnection reconnection fee sort of explicitly as that's something, a fee that's as that's something, a fee that's created in municipal code and would never had a dollar amount attached to it. So I've simply just added a line item for that and pegged it to the disconnection reconnection for non-payment. Just made it the same exact fee. Including a $2.20 per month manual read fee for commercial accounts in the Windmaster District where we need to read their water account in order to know what to charge them for sewer. And because they're not our water customers and they're not on our, they don't have radio reads and all that, where for our meters, we just need to drive around the city in a, in a vehicle and read them via radio. One of our public works staff actually has to go to every address, go onto their property, manually look at their meter every month. Adding a lean processing fee, this has always been past practice. And this has kind of been the life of the consolidated fee schedules. We, we find fees, it seems like every year, I think we've got them all. And then we find something else that is a long ongoing fee that we've never added to the consolidated fee schedule. So this is existing practice and just making it explicit that when we have to file a lien to secure a delinquent utility account, that the county's cost is passed through and added to the, added to the account. So that's kind of the, the broad strokes of the consolidated fee schedule. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Megan?
Thanks, Will. I have three questions. And also one, I'm very excited that we're removing the municipal court payment plan fee. That is awesome for the equity end of things. I am wondering with the, the change of plea fee, are we gonna have that well-publicized to folks that would, you know, use it or potentially have to pay that fee without knowing?
Yeah, we'll have that on all the paperwork when you start, when you go in for your initial arraignment. And I'm sure that the judge will make people aware of that too when they're putting in their, saying that they're not guilty at their arraignment and scheduling a trial, letting them know that they need to let us know with 24-hour notice if they're, if they change their plea.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And then the Windmaster manual read, $2.20 seems surprisingly low to send someone up and read every month. Is that based on the hours we actually spend or?
It would be if we were only going up there to read one meter. But you divide that over the 30-some-odd meters. So the amount of time to drive up there, walk around for 30 meters. It's about, we calculated it out kind of back of an envelope, about $2.20.
Okay, great. And then final one, which is not one of the ones you mentioned, but parking and lieu. You know, with the new change we made last year, we've got residential and commercial spaces for 3,000, but we deleted industrial or land industrial on the form. I assume we didn't mean to do that in the actual fee.
Now, I have to ask Dustin about that. I know the municipal code itself is intended to just be, this is the, you know, it's kind of superfluous. We kind of, the fee itself is just the fee. You can tell the intent in the municipal code was just, this was the fee to change your parking. And then through time, we started slicing and dicing all sorts of different ways in the fee structure. So I think it is actually almost superfluous to state residential or commercial at this point, now that we're back to just a single fee. But that's the, but how, you know, how it exists in the consolidated fee schedule is exactly how it was written in that 2020-18 resolution.
Okay. I mean, is there a way we can clarify what industrial would be charged in the fee schedule?
So there's only one fee at this point. There's only one, $1 amount at all. It's that 3,000.
Right, but I feel like that, I guess that's just not very clear.
Yeah, I can adjust it. I'll talk to Dustin. And I think it would just be like a scribblers' change to, we just say business districts. Three, parking and lieu fee in business districts, $3,000.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Will.
Jessica?
Thanks, Mayor. On the, the vehicle rental, do, does anybody, do we borrow vehicles from other people and do they charge us?
No, we're kind of, well, we may with the county. And if Mark Janix on here can maybe chime in. But we're kind of the big fleet owner in the county, other than the county itself. So I think the Parks District, the Cascade Locks. You know, I just know that this is happening. I don't know the real frequency. I think it's a real sporadic one-off, kind of here and there type of thing. But no, we're, we're the big fleet owner in the area.
Okay, um. I have a question. So on page 71, line 413 and 414 calls out two intersections for proportionate share. But I know that we charge proportionate share for other intersections. So I just was curious why these two are called out.
So these are the only two, I think, formal proportionate shares adopted by resolution. And I may need Public Works to chime in when there is some development-specific impacts to the discreetly assignable to districts that, and how they, and how they charge for that. I can't really get into the details of that. But I do know that those sort of broad, it's kind of an SD, it's kind of like a SDC layered on SDCs. Those are only two proportionate share districts created by resolution.
Okay. Um. On page 72, where we talk about the SDCs changing, some of the other SDCs might change too, right? Or, oh, it's just because we don't have any stormwater ones yet?
Because, yeah, so the comprehensive utility rate study that is really going to dominate our first half of March here. That's water rate, water and sewer rates. But it's stormwater rates and SDCs because we've never had, we haven't had a, because it's with the updated CIP plans. So we're, while we're just, so while that project only covers rates for the water sewer side of things, it's, it's rates and SDCs for stormwater.
Are we? Because we have that other SEC project that's going to be looking at, like, using SDCs to incentivize different forms of development. But that's different, right? So we don't need to comment this.
Yeah, if, how we want to waive or pay for, you know, things to be partially funded, that would be separate than setting themselves. I've got a little puppy.
Yeah, I remember your puppy. You can probably hear my kids. And, and then I also, I didn't know, we have a wireless ordinance that's coming. It's referenced on page 74.
Yeah, that, one second, I'm sorry. So that's been a placeholder on there for many, many years. And, you know, I can, I can remove it. But it's always sat there as a reminder that we have an ordinance from 1996 that creates these. It's been unused. It's kind of not an active part of the municipal code. But it's from, since when I inherited this sheet, it's always been to be assigned a fee.
And then just one note, I noticed the, the third whereas references today's date, but it says 2020. And I think it's supposed to be 2021.
Thank you for that catch.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? No other questions? Okay. I don't have any questions. Thanks for all the explanation on all of these. I too think removing that payment plan fee was a good idea. And hopefully this, this, you know, penalty for changing your plea at the last minute. I mean, it makes sense to do, to do that and have people think about it way ahead of time just on a per chance that maybe somebody might not show up. That is a lot of, you know, if they wouldn't, if it was already a guilty plea, they wouldn't have to show up. Is that correct?
Right, or no, or no contest.
Or no contest. Then they, then the police officer wouldn't need to show up and we wouldn't have to pay overtime and they wouldn't have to, you know, not get any sleep and all those kinds of things. So, yeah, yeah, I think those were smart moves. We have a motion on page 62.
So I moved that the city council adopt Resolution 21-03 with the edit Jessica mentioned, adopting the consolidated schedule of fees, rates and charges for fiscal year 2021-22.
All right, I have a motion from Megan to adopt Resolution 2021-03, adopting the consolidated schedule of fees, rates and charges for FY 2021-22. Do I have a second? Mark has made a second. Any additional discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jessica?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Eric?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Thank you so much. Well, appreciate it. All right, keep my paperwork straight here. Let's see, we have Rachel request to Hood River Valley Parks and Recreation District for SDC-funded projects.
Great. Mayor McBride, councilors. The next item is also related to parks SDCs. So I'll leave it to you to decide how to address both of these. But the purpose of the item that, that city staff is presenting is that the city has an opportunity to formally request that system development charges collected within the urban growth boundary be prioritized for land acquisition for future parks and trails. This is consistent with the recently adopted multi-jurisdictional Parks and Recreation Plan. As you all know, system development charges are fees paid by developers to pay for necessary infrastructure expansions, including parks. The city does not calculate or charge our own system development charge. Parks and the Parks and Rec District does that. We collect the fee and immediately transmit it over to the Parks and Rec District. So again, the Parks and Rec District has requested input from their various partners in the community with regards to the use of Parks SDC fee. So this is an opportunity for the city of, city council to formally request inclusion of two projects. Staffs recommending two projects. The acquisition of two to five acres of land for parks within the urban growth boundary and the acquisition of trail easements and property within the same, within the same area. That I'll turn it over to the city council for discussion.
Thank you, Rachel. So just to, we had something on here. So the total amounts that Parks and Rec has collected in the, within the urban growth boundary is 781, about $781,000.
Mayor, there, and there are two figures out there. And this is where I think it's important to look at the next item as well. So that, those are the numbers over the past five years that River Parks and Rec provided to us. It's my understanding, based on their letter, that there is approximately a million dollars in the fund that was collected from fees within the urban growth boundary.
Okay. And the last time city funds were used specifically by Parks and Rec was for the Eagle Park, correct? And that was in, in the county. They came to the city and asked if they could use some of the city's funds for that.
Yeah, the, the IGA between the city and the county requires that the Parks and Rec District request approval from the city council to spend funds generated inside the UGB, outside of the UGB. And it's my understanding that Golden Eagle Park was last request.
Okay, thanks. Just for a little bit of history, so everyone kind of knew what we have. What, the last thing we did was that. And so I don't remember, and maybe you know, Mark, because you were involved in Parks and Rec prior to being on city council too. But what, when was the last time Parks and Rec money that has been collected from SDCs been used within the city?
There's, there's multiple facilities. I mean, they bought easements on West Side Trail. They've Culbertston Park in Seaver Craft area. There's a park sort of near St. Charles Place. I can't remember the name of it, that they bought with SDC money. So, so they've done stuff, yeah.
They've done stuff. Okay, great.
Expanded children's park. They contributed to the expanded children's park as well.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Just so, just kind of trying to get big picture here for what, what funds have been used for. So this discussion on requesting these funds, so we can get some more parks within the city.
Sorry, just to clarify, are we, we're talking about our request to them versus their request to us right now?
Right.
Well, I can go.
Okay, Megan?
I'm already unmuted. I mean, so I think the two, the two projects staff came up with are, you know, basically what we've been talking about with the master plan and all of our conversations around parks and parks acquisition. So on my end, they make sense. I would maybe clarify, just to be explicit, that the parkland within the urban growth boundary is ideally bought, you know, in the general areas we've been talking about in the master plan as the priority locations. But otherwise, I'm, I'm supportive of the request. They, they definitely make sense with our wants and needs.
Mark?
Thanks. I do want to recognize that Mark and Marcy from Parks District are listening in too. So thanks for you guys. Question for Rachel is that this, this anticipates city staff working with park staff or city staff or what's the, how does the machine run?
Yeah, thanks very much. Well, the answer is it depends. You know, we have a really strong working relationship with the Parks and Rec District and collaborate frequently on these types of projects. So really, this just identifies that there's a source of funds out there. We'll continue to work together to identify those, those potential locations.
Perfect, perfect.
Um, my personal opinion is this is exactly why we did the master plan. And through that process, everybody in all the different entities agreed that acquisition was like the thing to focus on because once it's, if it's gone, it's gone. So us getting access to these lands and then we'll figure out how to develop them later is, is the goal. So I would hope to, this is what would be called a good start. And then we can work with them on the rest of the SDC funds, finding acquisition opportunities as well. But I'm fully supportive of this. I think it, it's what we should be doing. So good on us.
Others? Tim?
Yeah, I agree with Megan and Mark. I do have a question. I think it's, it's to Mark's point. They had mentioned that the SDCs couldn't be used for park maintenance, but can they be used for park development?
Yes. Thank you for the question, councillor. SDCs are regulated in Oregon State statute. And so there's very specific things that they can be used for. And they have to be capacity-expanding. So if you acquire a piece of property and it's serving an area of growth, you can use system development charges to develop that park.
Thanks.
Others? With additional questions or comments? Eric?
I'll just say briefly, because I think Mark said it better than I could. I remember sitting actually in Mark's office with Megan, going through the chart. Are we going to partner here? Are we going to collaborate here? Are we going to lead here? But this does seem to be exactly what we were trying to do, which was trying to make real the pretty green blobs in some of the vision documents. So I appreciate Mark Hickok's leadership on this and that of his colleagues. And I think this is a step in the right direction.
Great. Thank you, Eric. All right, additional comments? Jessica, did you have something?
I was just going to make the motion. I will move to direct staff to submit an SDC request form for two projects to the Hood River Valley Parks and Rec District and to continue to collaborate with Parks District staff to implement the projects, uh, acquisition of two to five acres of land and parks, for parks within the urban growth boundary of five hundred thousand and acquisition of trail easements and property consistent with the Parks and Rec master plan at a hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you. Well, she's.
Sorry, you guys. Trying to keep the background noise down. Oh, and I'm looking, and I'm reading my paper and you guys are all waving your hands like, we can't hear you. Sorry about that. I moved to direct, um, we have a motion by Jessica, um, to direct staff to submit an SDC request form for two projects to the River Valley Parks and Rec District to continue to collaborate with Parks District staff to implement the projects of a two to five acre piece of land for parks within the urban growth boundary for five hundred thousand and acquisition funds of a hundred and fifty thousand for trail easements and property consistent with the Parks and Rec, uh, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second it, but I, a little bit different from how you just restated it, Kate. It's three to five acres of, of parks. So that doesn't mean a three to five acre park. It means.
It's two to five on the sheet, Mark.
Two, two to five acres of land.
Twenty-five acres of land.
So we aren't saying it's one, it doesn't necessarily have to be one, two acre piece or one, five acre piece. It could be a one and a half acre piece and a three acre piece. Okay, just so that's clear for the public. Uh, do I have a second?
No, I did second.
Oh, you seconded it, Mark. Okay. Uh, discussion? Megan, did you have something?
Well, I guess it depends on if the rest of council cares to add it. But, um, would anyone else like to add the, you know, defining thing of the, the park's plan should be within the priority areas identified in the master plan? Or are we fine with what is written as is?
Because it's collaborative in nature with our staff and theirs, I, I was fine, but, but it doesn't hurt either, so.
I mean, I think we're going to be following the park's master plan. So, I mean, that defines where general facilities are already. I'm okay with leaving it like it is. Tim?
It probably will, would be fine to leave it how it is, but I don't, I can see the, the benefit of the clarification.
Can you say that again, Tim, that last part?
I can see the benefit of clarifying it just for clarity purposes.
Jessica, do you want to put a clarification clause on that note, motion?
Yeah, I was trying to think of what it is, it would be, it would be, um, that the, the acquisition of the two to five acres is to be on the, following the West Side Area Plan? Is that?
I think, like, the trail one, you could say, consistent with the Parks and Rec master plan.
Okay.
To keep it pretty.
I will clarify my motion that the, the acquisition of the two to five acres will also be consistent with the Parks and Rec master plan.
Okay, we've got a clarification of the motion. Do you want to, um, second that clarification, Mark?
Yep, I'll, I'll do that second.
Okay, we have a clarification now of the first and the second, again, by Jessica and Mark. Um, additional discussion? Okay, um, roll call vote, Megan?
Yes.
Tim?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Jessica?
Hi.
Chair of all tied. Thank you. Great.
Okay, give me that again.
Okay, now we have, um, presentation from Mark Hickock. If, um, you want to put him on, I don't see him yet, but, um, regarding, um, SDC charge requests.
Hello.
Oh, there you are. Hey, Mark.
Hi. Hi, well, thank you, uh, thank you, council, for having me, uh, this evening to talk about this. Um, so, um, I, I think that we explained it pretty well that, uh, when there is, uh, something that is outside the urban growth boundary, um, uh, because of our collection agreements, the Parks District does need to, uh, approach the council to ask for permission to spend those funds outside the urban growth boundary. You're right, the last time we did this was, was for Golden Eagle Park, um, because it was, uh, fairly close to the urban growth boundary. We knew that city residents would be using that area. In this case, both of these projects are literally on the border of the urban growth boundary. In fact, the trail is, is no more than thirty or forty feet, uh, inside of the urban growth boundary and starts and ends in the city. Um, and so, uh, it will really serve the city residents. Um, and, and the other one as well shares a border on two fence lines with the urban growth boundary. So these are, are projects that will, uh, for sure, serve, uh, the, the, the city residents, which was the purpose of this in the first place. And I'm here to entertain any questions if you have them.
Okay, th- thank you, Mark. We have a, our packet, um, has, uh, the request in it, which was on page eighty-two. And then there was a map of the two, um, the properties on page eighty-three. Um, anyone, Mark, Megan?
Hi, Mark. Uh, thanks for being here. I, I think I have one larger question and then maybe a couple about the actual projects. But, um, and this is maybe stupid. Is there like, is there a separate pot of money for within the city versus within the urban growth boundary versus within the county? Or how do you track it?
There are two separate funds. One is for, uh, money collected outside the urban growth boundary and one is for money collected inside the urban growth boundary.
Okay, awesome. Um, and then I guess so we've got the, the information we have on these two projects is up to four hundred thousand for both of them. Can you kind of divide out what are the costs for each project individually?
Sure, it's about three hundred thousand for the west side, uh, property one and about a hundred thousand for the trail.
Okay. Um, and then, I guess, within both of those projects, what's the allocation of like county SDCs are being used for some portion, maybe? Uh, city SDCs for some portion, grants or other funding for some portion? Or, or are you picturing that all of it is being covered by the city SDCs?
At this point, all of it for the city SDCs, especially for the trail, because that one, um, although it's in the county, it's, it's really, it's for city residents. The other one will probably be a mix, but at this point, it is the very beginning of it where we're just planning. This is not actually purchasing the property and not developing the property. This is going through our due diligence to do, do, do the planning of it. Uh, and so we don't have any grants, um, right now. We have been told by the state that this is a great candidate for an acquisition grant and we would like to go for an acquisition grant if we get the permits to build a park in the scenic area. Um, but at this point, um, we are just planning on using the, uh, inside, the money collected inside the UGB, since that's the primary, uh, group that will be using this area.
Okay, so for the feasibility aspect of the, the, what hopefully is a larger project, you would think it's a hundred percent city SDCs?
Uh, at, for, for, for the feasibility part of it, yes. Uh, if we go towards the development of it, that could change and there will definitely be grant money, uh, involved, uh, in, in, uh, or purchase and development. Um, there would be grant money involved and we could use some of the county, the money. The county money is, is a, uh, much lower fund. Uh, there's not nearly as much development in the county than there is in the city. Um, and we are wanting to use that for some projects that are a little bit further out in the county, not ones that are right on the border. That will mostly serve city residents.
Okay, would you mind sharing how much is in the county pot of money?
Um, I don't know the exact amount, but it's around two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Mark? Uh, Zan Miller?
Um, that's right. It's not room for two marks here, Mark. I, um, I want to split my comments between the two projects. The, the trail project, uh, along the edge of Seabrook Rock is something that we, it, it actually sort of drove the master plan process. The fact that we weren't able to, um, get a land set aside within that development and that SDCs was supposed to be doing it, but wasn't. And so, so I'm, I'm, I'm super, my, my heart is warm that, that we're talking about, um, doing the, the trail over towards Elliott. Um, and, and so I'm highly supportive of that. Um, good job. For, for Blackman's Skaggle, uh, with, within the master plan, it, it is a viable park space for one of the four quadrants within the west side plan, the, the quadrant that's right around that. Um, so, so it really reflects about, you know, a twenty-five percent allocation towards the, those park things. The three hundred thousand dollars just for the planning sort of scares me a little bit in that we don't know scenic area. You know, we don't know if it's going to be approved. You know, is, is this, it, it sounds like some cost on a, on a bet that this big thing will happen. Um, on the personal level, I like Blackman's Skaggle a lot. On the city, where does it fit within the master plan for the city? It's, you know, it's, like I said, it's a quarter of the west side plan properties. So, I, I guess I, I'd like to, um, suggest that we sort of talk about, are we, what's the cost sharing and risk reduction for the, that initial step on Blackman's Skaggle? Does that make sense?
Was there a question on there for, for, for me, Mark?
I don't know. Maybe you can just talk to the, how, how do we get, what's the least number of dollars to spend to get through the, yes, it can be a, yes, it, it can be open space park?
It's, so you're looking at pretty close to it. So, the, not all that money is going into studying. Some of that money is going into securing it. So we had to purchase an option from both of them. The option's about seventy-two thousand dollars per year. And we had to purchase that for two years in order to make this work, because, uh, the planning process to get through a scenic area permit is about a year. And, uh, in order to, uh, go through the process to do all your due diligence and, uh, and plan the park is about, um, another year or so. So we, we just hired, um, Walker Macy, uh, some, some consultants to go through that. And we are going to be going through there. Um, the, the reason that we're going to all this trouble is because this property is in the scenic area. And when we went to the county and asked them, can we build a park with ball fields, you know, a, a, a bathroom facility, parking, all of these different things, they came back and said, we can't answer that. The only way to really answer that is to run it through the scenic area permitting process, because they have never seen a, a park of this scale and the size built in the scenic area before. And we, we know, we even checked with the other counties to see what other parks had been built, uh, in the scenic area. And parks of this nature just haven't been built in the scenic area, uh, before. So, um, it, it really came down to the county and saying we had to have to go through the entire permitting process. And, you know, with that, there's lots of, uh, uh, you know, studies with traffic impact analysis and wetland delineation and, and, and a lot of these different things. And so, um, rather than get stuck with a piece of property, purchasing a piece of property outright, then, then finding out after a couple of years of due diligence that we can't do what we promised the voters we could do with it, um, and, and get into a situation like that, um, which we have been in before. Um, we decided that we should really do our homework well and get an approved permit here. So that's, that's where we're at. We really, we were, we tried to keep it as low as possible, but, but it's, it's going to be about three hundred thousand dollars to figure this out. And this is not, the, you know, we're, we're confident that we can get there with this. And if we do, then, then, you know, hopefully a lot of this, this information and these studies and everything can go straight into the development of the property. Does that answer your question some?
Jessica, did you have a question?
Um, I was just going to say, especially knowing now that some of the, um, the payments to hold that property are included in that amount. Um, you know, just, I can say how complicated the scenic area planning can be. And so I, I think that, um, putting some money and time towards it is, is essential to make sure that it's a viable project.
Um, I'm going to go and then Tim. Um, I, I kind of feel trepidatious about the Blackman's Skaggle property. I'm totally on board with the Elliott Park property and the trail there with, you know, getting that finished and, um, working with Columbia Land Trust. And I think that's a good use of some of those funds and it will be, you know, additional trail that, um, you know, is SDCs. It's going specifically to finish a trail, get more access, you know, buy easements, whatever it is. I'm not even sure a hundred percent if the SDCs for the city would qualify for, you know, option money and planning, you know, it's not acquisition, it's not building a new park. Um, I'm a bit trepidatious about that. And I've worked in the scenic area for years and years and years, because that was my job. And I know how difficult it is to, um, get this kind of thing on a piece of property like that. I remember when Beacon, Beacon Rock was expanded, the park there, and they said, no, you can't put a parking lot there. Um, you have to move it over here, so it can't be seen from the trail going up the rock. Um, so, you know, and this is wide open property and how are you going to hide it? And sometimes they'll say, well, you can't hide it, so you can't do it. So I'm very trepidatious about spending this kind of money on a possibility, um, at this point. So that's my take on that. Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Those are, I agree with all of what's, what's been said previously. I'm wondering, and maybe this is, I'm sure that this is way ahead of, of where you're at, but have, have any of the land, the adjacent landowners been contacted about the potential for, about, about this park, potential for this park?
Um, over the past years, they have not, uh, not recently, but we did do a, a small study of the property um, uh, in twenty sixteen, um, where, uh, a lot of them were brought in as stakeholders. There was a, a grad, graduate class at PSU that, that helped us with it. Um, and we didn't go as deep as we needed to in order to go through the permitting process and such, but we reached out to a lot of them, uh, at that point. Um, and we definitely will be again, um, going through this process, uh, reaching out to adjacent landowners on it.
And how did they feel about the park?
It's mixed, you know, uh, I think that there were some questions about, would you feel okay with, uh, with, with lights, like a lit park? A, a, a lit, lit ball fields. And, uh, that was one that, um, uh, they were not as comfortable with. But, uh, but as far as, uh, parkland, um, there was a, um, mixed results. And, and we, I don't think that we are going for a lit park at this place that, you know, the, uh, uh, west side elementary is right across the way. And if that area, they, they want to put lights there, it'd be much easier to put lights on their fields there than it would on, on these ones.
There appears to be an orchard next to there. Did you talk to the, that owner?
Uh, not recently, um, but yeah, that, the orchard is in the urban growth boundary. Um, uh, I, I don't know in the twenty sixteen plan, uh, what's, uh, what they talked about with him at that point.
Thank you.
Others? Questions or comments? Megan?
I'm going to go more opinion and less love. Um, and this is really hard, because obviously, like, the trail would get used. I mean, heck, I would definitely use it. Um, and I think if, if you could actually get the west side park, obviously, that's a huge benefit for the community. Um, I, I am struggling with the, the ask that all of this is covered by city SDCs and not some sort of shared cost. Um, system, um, I think, you know, things like the, the trail is, is the stuff that's built outside of the urban growth boundary. It's on Columbia Land Trust land. And so it's like, the land is secure, basically. So I don't feel like it's, we need to do it now or we lose. And so it's like the land is secure basically. So I don't feel like it's, we need to do it now or we lose an easement. And, you know, to Kate's point, I, I, there is putting a lot of money towards a possibility. Well, I, I can both see the value of, obviously we need to answer these questions if we want to have that possibility actually come to fruition. I don't love that all of that uncertainty is being put on, you know, city residents, SDCs. And then all of this, you know, we'd be spending about half of the pot of money on things that are outside of the urban growth boundary. And they would be used by city residents, but I would like to see, given our conversation, that literally the last thing we just talked about being priority of acquisition of things. It feels hard to say, hey, we're going to prioritize this, but we're also going to put the money towards other things that aren't what we just said is the priority. I don't know what my answer is to that, but it feels a little hard to say, yeah, I want to, I want to totally hand over $400,000.
I, I agree with you, Megan. It seems, you know, it's a large burden for the city to have for a pretty big risk, in my opinion, on whether it's going to come to fruition. You know, if it was a smaller ask with a lot more shared partners for that, you know, it'd be a little bit easier to swallow anyway. And you know, if it was a sure deal and it was already done and you're saying, and we need this to, you know, put in the park, then I'd go absolutely every cent. Yes, go. But it's just so much risk for us to be putting in right now without it being a little bit more shared, it feels like. Others? Other comments? Right. Thank you.
Mary, right?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Sorry. I just wanted to clarify one point. You had questions whether or not this could be used for planning and for securing easements and such, rather than the actual purchase and development. And, and it can be, we've, we have checked on all of that. And, and so that is an allowable use of this, of these funds. So just to clarify that.
Mark Sammiller?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Mark if, given this discussion, is there some, are there clever ideas to cost share the scenic area permission part of the cost or, you know?
Yeah. Some of it can go toward the county SDC funds. Like I say, I think the majority of the people that would be using this park, the vast majority with the neighborhoods that are going to be butting up against these, the, you know, two corners of this will be city residents. So I, I, if there's a, you know, i- if it, if it helps sell it or, you know, helps you feel better about it, we can dip into the county SDC dollars. We don't need to ask for any permission in order to use the, or answer the outside UGB SDC dollars. So it can be a split with that. You know, if, if, if you think that maybe 20% of the people that are using this park will be county residents and 80% will be city, we could make a split around, you know, 80, 20 or something like that. Or, you know, whatever, wherever you, you, you feel like that will be. And then of course, with the development of it, we really do plan to leverage a, a lot of other funds in order to be, to, to, to move forward with that. But with, unfortunately, there really aren't grants to secure options on pieces of property. And if, if you remember right, one of these pieces of property was for sale. Jeff Blackman had his up on the market. And we really wanted to get an option on this property in order for him to take it off the market, which is what happens when we sign the option with him. He called his real estate agent and pulled it off the market. So, you know, if, 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 if we don't, if we don't act on, on property like this when it is available and, and empty, we could lose it. And that's what we were trying to do is move quickly because we have heard this, this, this project also does is, has been pushed very hard by a lot of people in many of our surveys and just coming to our meetings. And so there, this has some pretty great community support.
Mark Hickock, I have a couple more questions. And if you, if you don't want to answer these because they're money questions, just tell me, can't answer. Okay. Does the option money go towards the purchase price or is it separate?
It's separate. We tried to get it to go for the purchase price, but they wouldn't agree to that.
Okay. Have you had an appraisal and come to an agreed upon price?
We have come to an agreed upon price. The price is about $85,000 per acre. It is a little complicated because it's, they both, there's two parcels there and they both would like to keep one acre for rental home for 10 years. If the property comes into the urban growth boundary, they would like us to split that out and they would keep that acre. But if it does not, then we will purchase that final acre or purchase the easement back from them for 85,000 plus interest. So we will actually only be paying for 18 of the 20 acres at first.
Okay. Okay. And I guess my question, that one question, did you get an appraisal?
We did get an appraisal. I don't have that exact dollar amount. In front of me, it was lower than, than the price that we've finally agreed to. It was a long, probably close to a year negotiation with them. And that's about where we could get, but I don't have that number.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Additional? Jessica?
I was just going to say that I, I know that I, I really do think that the large majority of the folks that are going to use this park are going to be city, you know, be living within the UGB. And I understand that this is what I think, I think we, we've heard also from the community that they really want this park to happen. I think it even showed up in like some of our, the 2021 work plan comments. And if this is what it's going to take to make that perk happen, then, you know, sure, it's not great, but I think we need to make that, try to make that perk happen. I guess so. I'm okay if we want, if the city is fully covering it, if our SDCs are fully covering it. But also if, you know, if others want to recommend some kind of split, then, then I'm okay with that. And I'm fine with the, the trail. I think that's great.
I guess my hesitation is, you know, if I knew that this money absolutely 100% was going to give an okay by the gorge commission to do what we want to do, I would probably go, well, you know, it's going to be a slam dunk. We're going to have to pay for it. We're going to get a park, but I don't believe that. You know, I just don't know if it's going to be approved. So I mean, I just think it's a risk. It's a pretty large risk just because of my dealing with this, these particular kinds of things. Recreation intensity zones, screening, key viewing area, you know, all the stuff I dealt with. I'm a bit trepidatious about it. So, you know, that, that's why I, I'm hesitant on spending the city's money in any big way without other entities being involved in the risk. Eric? And then Mark? Jen Miller?
Yeah, I, I mean, the mayor is obviously speaking the truth there when she talks about the risk. And I'm struggling though, because I, Councilor Meta also, what her comments are resonating with me. And having maybe a risk on the other side of failing to act means that one day these are just houses and there's no park. So that is another risk. But I guess I, maybe I'm still in the question zone because I'm not sure exactly what the question is before us, before council. Because I'm reading Mark Hickock's letter February 18th. It sounds to me that they're not asking us to, you know, write them a check to buy the property, but they're in fact wanting to do a feasibility study to maybe get at some of these concerns that the mayor is raising, which are legitimate and perfectly, you know, good questions to be asking. And so, you know, I, but I, so I guess I'm sensing the question isn't let's go buy this today. It's more, hey, let's look into this because maybe we should buy it. And if that's the question, which I think is the question, I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. So I guess maybe I'm asking, what is exactly the question before council? Because I, I'm aware, there is a risk here, but there's also a risk of not having a park. And I, I would hate, regardless of the outcome of tonight's discussion, I wouldn't want it to chill the progress to making these parks over on the west side of reality.
Thanks. Thank you for the question. To, to answer that, yes, we are looking to study this property, not specifically right now to purchase. We won't make this decision to purchase this property until after we get the results of the scenic area permits and, and get that approved. Also, just a clarification, we're not asking the city to write a check. We, we have the money in the SDC account. It is money that, that the Parks District collects. And we're asking for the city to, to give us permission to spend some of our money that we collected or that the city collected outside the urban growth boundary. So it's, it's, it's not that we're going to the city asking for city money. It's money that's already in, with the Parks District.
Right. And I, I did misspeak there a little bit, speaking loosely. Because I think there's an intergovernmental agreement that says you can't do that. So that's probably why you're here asking for permission. Is that right?
Correct. Yep.
So Mark Hickock, you, you said the, the money would go for Walker Macy fees. Is that correct? And, and it would also go to pay the option for?
Yes.
Okay. And what else? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. And that's about 300, 300,000?
Yeah, about that. So I, I shouldn't say that, that's about it. In case there are any other things that come up with the study outside of Walker Macy's scope. You know, they, they need some sort of a different soil analysis or, you know, other studies or something like that. There's a little bit built in for that.
And that's the, for permitting fees that you would have to pay to the gorge commission? And, you know, mapping and like you said, environments, everything involved in the permitting process through the, the scenic areas, correct?
Yes.
Mark Sammiller?
Yeah, I was just asking myself, how much would I sort of bet on, on, on the process? And, and the number I keep coming back to is about, you know, a year's burn rate of, or a year's rate of SDC stuff. So if, so if, I guess if we're looking for a number, I, I would like to talk about, you know, maybe allocating 150 towards the Blackman's Skagell with the understanding that once the permissions are given and stuff, that a bigger city SDC investment in, in the next phase is probably applicable to, 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 to this thing. You know, maybe that's a grant match or, or something like that. So I, I'd be comfortable right now with the, you know, 150 towards that one. But it's, it's a gamble, but like, like Eric said, is, you know, you'd hate to watch it go away. So zero isn't the right answer, but 300 seems like a pretty heavy left. So that's about where my head is.
I think that's a, the one year burn rate feels like a comfortable gamble to me as well. And thank you for bringing that up, Mark. I feel like I'd be comfortable with that.
I also feel comfortable with that, Mark, because it's, you know, it's just a share, then it's a shared risk. And, you know, it's, it's taking a gamble on a year's worth of SDCs, not, you know, two and a half years' worth of SDCs. But I'm feeling much more comfortable with that number. Others?
I already said I was fine with it as presented.
Tim?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that makes sense to me. I guess what I would like to hear is how Mark feels about that, or kickoff.
Um, well, I, I mean, maybe, maybe if we could say that I could come back at a later date and, and, and ask for more if we need to. And in fact, if we had to go to purchase this property, we will probably need to do that to go back and, and ask. I feel like, you know, you know, some of this money is for, you know, the development that, you know, I'm sorry, some of the outside, the UGB money is collected from, you know, people are building their house in Parkdale or Odell. And at, at $150,000, that's about a split of 50/50. And so the thought of, you know, a person building a house in Parkdale, feeling like they're getting their, their money's worth out of SDC that they're charged for a, a park that's being built right next to West Side Elementary is not quite as fair as somebody that, you know, purchased a, a home here in the city limits. So that's why we were really trying to use the city, the city SDC funds for this. Because it's, it really is somebody, as a proximity thing, the people are, are a lot closer to it that are spending the SDCs on this, in this area. But I, I understand your points and I understand that there's definitely a risk here. But our Parks District has been in situations where we purchased property before and, and, and not been able to develop it to the same level that we wanted to. And we're trying to avoid that at this point.
Yeah, I kind of feel like, you know, this is going to be like a regional park. I mean, I know it's going to be next to the city limits, but I think it's going to be something like the swimming pool or waterfront park or children's park or Jackson Park. You know, there's people that come from all over the county to use those larger parks for, you know, get togethers with their families or whatever. I mean, it won't be right next door true. But I think it's, you know, it's going to be a, if it can be secured and bought and developed, it's going to be a big park. And so I think it's, it's going to have quite a draw. It's pretty easy for people to get to from the mid part of the valley too. So I, I don't know, and, you know, and like Golden Eagle by the high school, it, you know, and the pump track. I mean, it's a unique thing and I think this could be a really unique thing too, that would draw quite a few people personally. If we don't have any more questions for Mark Hickock, do we have a motion of some sort? Or direction for staff? I don't think we have a motion. Here. Wait a minute. Page 81.
So I, I will make a motion and, and just quick first. Mark, I think that us saying not the whole 300 now doesn't say that the correct ratio won't be true after, you know, we spend the $2 million for the whole, the whole thing. So it's just, how do we, how do we risk reduce that, that this kickoff thing? That said, I'll make a motion that we approve the modified request for the Hood River Valley Parks and Rec District to spend up to, it would be $250,000 of SDC funds for the two proposed projects. That's 150K for Blackman's Skagell and 100K for the East Side Trail.
Okay, Mark's made a motion, Mark Sammiller's made a motion to allow $250,000 of the city's SDCs to go to the River Valley Parks and Recreation District for two proposed projects, 100,000 for Elliott Park, the East Side Trail project and 150,000 towards the Blackman's Skagell, due diligence and feasibility. Do you have a second?
I'll second. I just have a question of do we need to define between the two projects? Or like if Parks and Rec can do a cost savings in the trail, are we comfortable with whatever that savings is going to Blackman's Skagell? I mean, and maybe that's a Mark question. Or does that matter to council?
I was just trying to identify the two projects in my motion and not so much a hard line between them. So I, I would modify it if it is needed to.
I, I would probably prefer not to have a hard line between them in case I am able to, 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 to make some cost savings in one and be able to move over to the other.
So Kate, if I modified the motion to 250K for those two projects, is that? So Kate, if I modified the motion to 250K for those two projects, is that sufficiently deep?
Yeah, that's fine.
So I get that modification?
Okay, so Mark has modified the motion, just 250,000 for the two projects. And Megan, have you seconded that? Is that what you, okay, as modified. Additional discussion? Roll call vote. Tim?
Hi.
Eric?
I.
Megan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Kate? Kate votes yes. All right. Thank you, Mark Hickock. Live the discussion. I'm sorry, it wasn't the full 400 for you, but it's a start.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Organizational updates. Department heads. Let's see, who do we have on this evening? I'll just ask, does anyone have any updates from any of the departments, either of the chiefs or Mark Janik, Wade Seaborn, or Dustin? I don't see Dustin on, but you can unmute yourself if you have anything. I don't see any updates. Okay. Right. Mayor call. A couple of things. I already mentioned that I was on radio Tierra and that went really well, quite a bit of discussion about housing. And there, we had a great interpreter and we were able to do it by Zoom this time. And, and we are on Facebook Live with them and worked really well. So I'm not sure who's going to be on next time, but I had said, they had so many questions about housing, I suggested Joel Madsen might, might be helpful for their program. I'm going to be starting what we're going to be calling the mayor's equity listening sessions probably within three or four weeks. And the next door is going to pull together some participants for us. And we're going to try and do those in the evening, early evening, and, you know, whatever time works best for the participants basically. And at this point, it's just going to be a listening session, see what's on people's minds. And we'll go from there for topics of discussion after that and try to do them monthly.
How does council quorum stuff work with that? Are you going to notice it or keep us away or which?
I think that we'll, we'll try to just like we were going to do last time is just try and have councillors sign up, like one councillor each time could sign up. So we don't get any kind of a quorum thing going on. And try to do it monthly. That's what we did last time. But then COVID hit, so we weren't able to, to do that. But we don't have a date yet. So as soon as we know the, the date, we don't have a date yet, do we, Rachel?
We don't have a date, mayor. No.
Okay. All right. Next door, coordinating it.
Yeah, it'll probably be a week, the week before spring break or the week immediately after spring break.
The other thing is, we have a new officer and her name is, her name is Kai or Kyle, Kai. I'm not sure if you say Kylie? Or how you pronounce it, but she goes by Kai Foley. And we had a picture and I'm not sure if you could bring that up, Jonathan, so people could see. She was sworn in this week. And I came down and swore her in. She's been a police officer previously in Seattle. So she's going to be able, she isn't just a brand new recruit that's never done this ever before. So she's going to be able to start sooner than later. Actually, you know, being on the force and riding along and, and doing her thing. So we wanted to get her sworn in as, as quickly as we could because we've been down a couple officers for quite a while. And so we've, we've got her now on the force. So that's pretty exciting. See, I don't think I have anything else. Just double check. I think that's all I have. Council call. Tim?
Thanks, mayor. Really nothing for me this, this time, other than to acknowledge the hard work of the fan ball and the other members of the tree committee to get our Tree City application and successfully doing that.
Thanks, Tim. Megan?
Yeah, so Rachel and I attended the Visit Hood River meeting last, it's Monday last week. I think you probably all saw the press release from on the radio. They have selected the new executive director to start, it was March 1st or April 1st. And I kind of say like with COVID stuff and with, you know, again, the continuing changes of Chamber versus Hood River, it feels like they're kind of getting their feet under them again as a group. Was very interesting at the meeting, kind of did a round table, everyone in attendance, how were the businesses doing? How did they do last year? What, what are they looking at for the coming year? Hard to summarize all of that, but I do think, obviously, last year was not really good for pretty much anyone, but it did seem like it was less bad than I think everyone was expecting. And including, you know, definitely there was one, one person that said, okay, it wasn't good, but it was survivable because we were able to do more outside seating, you know, because the city's been permitting some of that. That's obviously very business to business dependent. So certainly some folks were significantly harder hit than others. But it does seem like there's more optimism for the year ahead, a lot of expectation for this to be a very busy summer, including just like back to back weddings for everyone everywhere. So we'll see how that goes. Conferences and that sort of stuff, which is, again, is very business specific, is obviously still down. And there isn't very much optimism around that one yet. And also, interestingly, it sounds like a lot of businesses are struggling with some labor shortage issues for the coming season, which I wasn't expecting. And then Jessica and Rachel and I kind of sat down, year out game plan of who's attending these meetings and how we're going to do it. And I think we are all comfortable with the decision of Rachel's going to go to the monthly meetings, but we will try to have the chamber come out and, and do like twice a year updates to really talk through kind of the stuff that was actually very interesting at this last meeting about what's, what's the business climate, whether it's the business community facing or how they've been doing, what, what are they seeing coming ahead? Which I think will actually be really great for all of council to hear and participate in. Jessica or Rachel, do you have things to add? Awesome. I don't have anything else.
Thanks, Megan. Go ahead. I'll have Jessica next. You can add on if you had anything to that and then whatever else you have.
I'd just say thank you to Megan and Rachel for going to that meeting and to Rachel for continuing to attend those meetings. We kind of talked about what was best use of our time based on what some of the meetings end up focusing on. The one thing I was just going to share from like a work level perspective, we are, one of the things that Mid Columbia Economic Development District does is develops a, the regional comprehensive economic development strategy, which is a five year plan for where the region is going, where we want to go as an economy. And it's really something that we develop by partners in the community. So we're inviting folks like, like all of you to come to meetings and tell us, you know, values and strategies and based on hearing data about where we are and whatnot. So those meetings are going to start kicking off March 31st. It'll be the first one talking about COVID impacts and what is, what does a resilient economy look like? And then after that, it'll be monthly meetings. So I can share that with Rachel to share with the council if you guys want to sign up.
Thanks, Jessica. Eric?
Thank you, mayor. I'll just mention one thing. I mentioned this maybe a year ago or so. And it's not an official city council ex officio type of thing, but I have been asked to be part of what they're calling an oversight committee for the Performing Arts Initiative, which is this group of local folks in the gorge who are trying to bring a world-class performing arts center to become sort of a regional or even maybe national performing arts center to the gorge. They have some property picked out by the Columbia Gorge Hotel and it's, they're a long ways from breaking ground. But this oversight committee is involved in just testing the feasibility of whether this could actually happen because it's a very ambitious concept and a very ambitious goal to actually get there. And the concept is around the tune of about a $40 million complex. So, and folks involved with this are people from the community like Mark Steigner, I'm sure people know, Emily Vodder, Linda Hardum. Anyway, we had, we've been having meetings around the idea of just testing this in the community. And it's, it would be quite an amazing thing to actually accomplish. But I just thought I'd report to council that I, I am actually part of this group. Of course, it's, it's, this is all volunteer community stuff, but it's still in the very early stages, just testing feasibility.
Thanks, Eric. Mark?
I don't think I have anything I need to share today, so.
Okay. All right. So we have an executive session this evening. So I need to read a script here. And Rachel or Jonathan, how are we going to be doing this? Will just all the other attendees drop off? Or, because we didn't get another Zoom meeting number to call into?
Yeah, mayor, thanks for the question. Everybody will drop off and will stop recording. Jonathan will make me the host or the co-host. And mayor, you can go ahead and announce it.
Okay.
I'm assuming you won't be coming back into session.
Right, right. Okay. The city council will now meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statutes 192.6601I to review and evaluate pursuant to standards, criteria and policy directives adopted by the governing body, the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee or staff member. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made or final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last 20 to 30 minutes, but may be extended by general announcement to the public outside of council chambers. At the end of the executive session, executive session, well, we will not, I guess, we will welcome the audience back into the room and, but we won't, we actually won't be doing that. We aren't going to come back into open session. But we will not be taking action in the executive session or after. All right. So Jonathan, if you can get us, get us where we need to be with this?
Absolutely, mayor. I'm just giving the last three attendees a moment to
Okay.
up before I remove them.
Okay, great.
And then I will promote Rachel to host and leave the group of you to it.
Okay, thank you.
And Jonathan, are you going to stop the recording?
Yes.
Okay.